Good afternoon, and welcome to the April 29th session of the special meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have roll call, please?
Council members, Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Taro.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Harrison Ania.
Here. What's next on the agenda?
The agenda for the April 29th, 2014 special public meeting of the city council was postponed on Thursday, April 24th, 2014, on bulletin board outside city hall. For this body, first item is Director of Community Development, Community Services and Parks and Economic Development regarding proposed development of Rock Haven site located at 2713 Honolulu Avenue. One A is motion authorizing issuance of a request for qualifications subject to council comments and direction.
Yes, Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. Six years ago this month, the city of Glendale purchased the property at 2713 Honolulu, familiarly known as Rock Haven. It's about 3.4 acres, and the purchase price was 8.25 million. Idea at that time was to entertain any number of community types of amenities ranging from a library to parks and open space to community space. And the idea then was to involve the historic preservation community, as Rock Haven has been determined in a number of surveys, to be historically significant as a health sanitarium for folks throughout the early part of the last century, when you saw this entire region dotted by these types of facilities. And this is one of the last that remains. Excuse me. So with the onset of the recession, however, the idea of being able to expand services, quality of life, soft services, and particularly to do so in such a capital-intensive manner, with that notion falling by the wayside, then we were charged with finding out what to do with this asset that the city has owned again at the price of 8.25 million. To the extent that this council has been highly focused upon historic preservation, maintaining the quality of life for the residents in the Montrose and far north area, as evidenced by the acquisition of this property, we knew that there were going to be any number of limitations on what ultimately could be done with this asset. Further, to the extent that we go through the budget process and there is no discretionary CIP funding available from the city to invest in this site, we ran the risk, or have been running the risk, of allowing the site to literally deteriorate before our eyes if we don't do something constructive with it. So with the council's blessing earlier this fiscal year, we took the bold step of engaging the historic community, namely the Friends of Rock Haven, the CV Historical Society, the Glendale Historical Society, our own Historic Preservation Commission and staff, and the Parks and Community Services Staff and Commission, with the idea being that we needed to focus on the interests of all of these groups to find a cost-effective way of utilizing this property for the benefit of our residents, and at the same time do the good work of historic preservation that would allow us to realize the value of this asset. What we have before you is the culmination of a first, effectively a visioning process, a what-if process, of what might be, what could be, if we were to partner with the private development community on this site to ensure the preservation of the Rock Haven assets, and do so in a way that focuses on adaptive reuse for the site, and what ultimately could be done with the balance of that site. Beginning first with these quiet conversations with a number of stakeholders, and then maturing into formal presentations before the Historic Preservation Commission and the CSP Commission, we now are before you to ask your permission to issue a request for qualifications to see what the development potential for this site is. The RFQ oftentimes you'll see accompanied by an RFP, where we're asking for qualifications of the development community and then asking at the same time for proposals. However, as further evidence of the need to go slow for the respect for the site and for the stakeholders, we are slowing this process down to break apart that RFQ and RFP process. Thus, if council is amenable, we would issue a request for qualifications to a number of potential developers and partners and builders for the site that's been accumulated by our CDD staff, and at that point be able to issue RFQ, receive the RFQ back in July of this year, and at that point be able to sit with our partners in this visioning process and determine if indeed it is worthwhile to take the next step of progressing to an RFP process, where things would get a little more serious at this particular site for any adaptive reuse and the utilization of the westerly portion of the site that is generally uncovered by any historic structure. So what you have before you, and if you would like to walk through the actual mechanics of the RFQ itself, we can do that. You've seen and read a good deal about this heretofore, so it's really the council's pleasure, or you can hear from the folks who have participated in this process, namely the representatives of the various historic societies and groups who are here, and have been gracious to follow along this process with us. But at this point, what we are asking for is to take this inaugural step that binds us to nothing and allow us to issue the RFQ.
I'd like to hear the mechanics of the RFQ.
Say again, sir?
The mechanics of the RFQ.
Then Mr. Zovak, come on up and walk through.
As regards to the RFQ, as Mr. Ochoa mentioned, the group of city staff members got together to put this RFQ process together. The RFQ team is made up of members of Community Development, Economic Development, and Community Services and Parks. Those are the team members there. In addition to the team members who created the RFQ, it was done in consultation with, as Mr. Ochoa mentioned, the historical societies, Glendale Historical Society, Crescent Valley Historical Society, Friends of Rock Haven, and it has been reviewed by both the Historic Preservation Commission, Parks Commission. Both commissions were excited about the RFQ and very interested in having the results of the RFQ brought back before them for consideration and more consultation if it were to morph into an RFP process. The RFQ is broken down into really 11 sections. The first section really is just the introduction, and it clearly states what it is that the city is looking for, and that is looking to select a qualified developer that can introduce a suitable type of limited but focused new development that also preserves potentially historic structures and opens up the site and the open space or portions of it to the community. The issuance date is expected to be May 2nd, this Friday, and the submittal deadline date of July 2nd will be a 60-day outstanding period for the RFQ.
What does focused mean in that context?
We'll get to that. We'll be able to get to that later on in the presentation. And by focused, you'll be looking at the size of the site and some of the limitations as to where new development can take place on the site. And when you see those limitations, that really denotes the focus part. Section 2 does a really, for those developers that may not be familiar with Glendale, section 2 is kind of the introduction to the city of Glendale. Talk about the transformation that our downtown is going through. We talk about the high-quality neighborhood districts that we have, the intent to keep those districts and the architecture in its current state. Talk about the amenities that we provide for both residents and businesses, and the size of the city and its location to the LA County and LA region. North Glendale provides developers kind of a narrow look at the site, the Rock Haven site in context of North Glendale. Provides also a description of the Crescent Valley while representing, I believe it's four districts and four jurisdictions, it is considered as one area. There is information provided to developers about the North Glendale Community Plan and its intent in trying to preserve the North Glendale area. Some information about the shopping centers that service this area of Rock Haven, Montrose Shopping Park, Spar Heights Business District, and then some information about the actual neighborhood that Rock Haven site sits in, the Verdugo City neighborhood. In terms of the Rock Haven site itself, we give some information about the site. The site is made up of 11 parcels, six parcels along Hermosa, five along Honolulu, approximately 150,000 square feet of property, about 3.4 acres. The property with the two different zoning designations, the six parcels along Hermosa Avenue are zoned R3050, five parcels on Honolulu are zoned commercial, C21. With those zoning designations, the approximately 84 units by right are allowed to be developed on the property. We do provide some history of the Rock Haven, of Rock Haven itself, that it is one of the most important historic sites in North Glendale, comprises 15 buildings situated in what we say is a rich and fully integrated landscape. We let developers know that is a rare surviving example of an institutional typology that once flourished in the Crescent Valley. So we're trying to give them as much context as possible. Again, we do discuss the city's acquisition of the site, as Mr. Ochoa mentioned, 8.25 million back in 2008. The intent of the city's acquisition at that time was to protect the historic nature of the site, preserve the site or portions of it as a public community space, and to create park space and recreational service programming for the community. We provide a little information as to what's taking place right now under Glendale Water and Power. If you recall, Glendale Water and Power was given authorization to test and exploratory and drill an exploratory well. They did that on the westernmost portion of the property, the westernmost side of Hermosa Avenue. Was a successful drill. It is a well site that they feel is viable. They have, they intend to come back to the city council with plans to develop that site within the next one to two years, and they've asked that that site, that area, and really what they've asked for is 75 feet of frontage of that westernmost portion be preserved for Glendale Water and Power. And then we discuss the historic status of the site.
What was the size of the building pad again? 100 and something thousand square feet?
150,000 for the total development site?
Yeah, the development site, 150,000.
With regards to historic status, we make mention that the Rock Haven appears to be eligible for both the Glendale and California registers of historic resources, and is also likely eligible for the National Register of Historic Places, Historic Places. The site is currently undesignated, and any project that will be proposed there, by the time that that project has been committed to, the city is asking for a commitment that upon completion of the project on the property, the historic Rock Haven campus will be nominated for listing on the Glendale Register. So it's one of the conditions we put out there early on. This is the background of the historical assessment diagram that we have here, and to your question earlier in the presentation, focused new development would be new development focused in this area here, which has been determined to be the area that's most suitable for new development. This is the area considered to be in need of preservation or restoration, and then this is the GWP area that I just discussed. We have a discussion about the potential development of the site, and in that discussion we mentioned that the final project should preserve all or most of the historically significant buildings through adaptive reuse. We ask that they maintain and preserve a significant portion of historic landscape that exists there, and that we allow for, they allow for public access to all our portions of the campus. We do have a couple of warnings, and we say that any new construction on the site should be contextually sensitive to historic campus and compatible in scale to the existing buildings, and that proposals must reflect the vision that is appropriate for both the site and the neighborhood context. We describe what we think is considered to be good community involvement, knowing that there will be a lot of community interest in this development of the site. So upfront, we'd let the developers know as to what we consider a good community involvement, and it is these principles here: keeping the public well informed of ongoing and planned activities, encouraging and enabling the public to get involved, listening carefully to what the public is saying, identify, meaningfully respond to public concerns, adjust actions when public comments or concerns have merit, and explain, be able to explain to the public how the developers reach its decision or recommendations. The requirements of the RFQ, we ask that developers respond and provide information as to their development concept, type of development that they envision for the site, type of population they intend to serve, their experience and professional qualifications as it relates to development of this nature. If they do have it early on, sources and uses to provide those, to provide some explanation as to who their partnerships have been in the past and who they might anticipate it being for this type of proposal, what their experience has been with community involvement, what constraints or assumptions they've identified early on, and then we ask that they complete a conflict of interest declaration. We let them know that the RFQs will be reviewed by a review committee, most likely consisting of the same team making up of the RFQ team. The selection criteria would be based on a development experience, development and team partnerships that they plan to bring to a proposal like this, and then separately calling out the design team, because that's considered to be the most important element after developer experience to this process. We ask that the developer provide and explain their vision, whether or not there are any additional benefits that haven't been outlined in the RFQ that they feel the development might provide to the community, what their experience has been with community involvement and public outreach, and whether or not the submittal is in compliance with the RFQ. We ask, again, that the submission date, we inform that the submission date is 5:00 PM, July 2nd, and during the time that the RFQ is outstanding, we plan to have two open houses on site. We think it's really important to be able to get them to tour the site, experience what is out there, do it under maybe a controlled environment through a presentation that the city plans to provide to the developers at the location, along with members of the Historical Society, Friends of Rock Haven, and the Crescent Valley Historical Society. So kind of a roundtable discussion onsite, and then give the developers an opportunity to be able to walk around the site and experience it during this timeframe. Then once they get an idea as to what they're really dealing with, we think a second open house is needed for them to bring back some of their consultants. A second time for this same timeframe to be able to then walk the site, start coming up with some type of vision for it. The back of the very last page of the RFQ includes a number of different links that we think is important. There's a city resource link or series of links that will be provided, that'll take developers to reports and surveys that have been conducted already by the city, by the Parks Department. There's a top graphical study that's been out, there's been an assessment of trees that's out and published. There are a file of different photos that have been taken early on when the city acquired the property, to give an idea of what it looked like then. So a number of different studies and reports that we think they'd find useful. There are also links to the Friends of Rock Haven, Glendale Historical Society, and the Crescent Valley Historical Society on areas that they've discussed Rock Haven in, and some links to the Glendale news press. I should say also, a great city resource link that we're going to have in that first item will be a link to a GTV6-produced documentary, 50-minute documentary on Rock Haven itself that they did a number of years ago, and won a couple of awards. So we think it provides the developers with excellent background and history of the We plan to mail the RFQ to who we identified as over 135 developers that have expressed an interest in developing in Glendale in the past. We plan on posting it to websites of membership, professional membership organizations that we belong to, press releases, GTV6, city's website posting. We plan to do some general social media site postings, and some specific social media site postings to architects, developers, historic preservationists, some local organizations as well, LA Conservancy, Glendale Association of Realtors, and that would cover it.
Thank you, Mr. Zovak. Any questions for Mr. Zovak with staff?
I do, I have some.
Yes, Mr. Najarian.
Are there a limit? Have we set a limit on the number of developers that we would narrow it down to?
No, we've said that ideally, we mentioned that ideally we'd like to come back with at most maybe three recommendations, and if there are not three that we would feel comfortable recommending, then the one that we would identify as the best.
Okay. And how, how much weight is going to be given to their, they'll be submitting concepts as well in this process, aside from their own qualifications?
They'll be submitting what we're calling their vision for the site, and as detailed as they can get it, to give us an understanding as to the ability, to give us the ability to understand what it is that they're contemplating.
Because you could have someone that has a great background in adaptive reuse and preserving historical structures, but their idea as to what they want to do could be fizzle.
Fully formulated, yeah.
And on the flip side, you could have someone with a great idea but doesn't have much background or track record in that. So how, how will you, how will you weigh that? I mean, that's a tough.
It'll be difficult, and that's why we didn't, we decided not to at this time assign points to these areas that are going to be evaluated.
Okay.
We thought it's best to be able to sit in kind of a roundtable discussion to look at some of the concrete things we can look at, and then start to discuss some of these areas that you're mentioning here, and how to evaluate that and weigh in.
And, and one of the requirements is that the stipulations is that the existing structures, the ones that are significant, would be placed on the National Registry or the?
Glendale Registry.
Glendale Registry. So are we telling them that they can't change windows if that happens?
We're telling them that if they, if they do, if they plan to rehabilitate the building, they need to do it per the guidelines for historic preservation.
There's some pretty tough guidelines, though.
They are.
Are they going to be fully aware of that?
Yes, they've been, it's made, I can read it verbatim in the RFQ, but there's mention...
I take your word for it, so that's, that's a fine, a fine head of the needle that we're trying to thread, I think, trying to make something that's economically viable at the same time preserving most, if not all, of the historical structures there.
Yes.
And give GWP their piece of it on the western side.
That's a good point, sir, because I think that ultimately points out, and probably should be made even more clear, that we are not, the primary motivation is not to recoup our 8.25 million. I think that's gone. To the extent that we are trading that 8.25 for the preservation of Rock Haven for a development of some sort, whatever that ultimately that concept is, that is not maximized for the sake of generating revenue, that all has to enter into this equation, up to and including who ultimately owns the rehab buildings, what goes into those rehab buildings, what type of buildings could be developed, at what density, at what cost, at what kinds of finishes. All of those things will have to pass back through the city council.
I think I'm approaching this from a different perspective, because I see two parcels, if you want to call it that. I see two issues. We have the rehab and ultimate use for the public of those existing buildings, and then we have a pad that according to the current zoning can take 84 units as a max. So I guess from my perspective, I'd be less interested in a developer getting involved with those existing buildings, other than to give the money or provide the workforce, et cetera. But the public portion of this site, in my opinion, should stay public, and it's up to Parks and Recreation, Community Development to get the work done, so to speak. Then that space on the left, that pad on the left, that gets developed, and it's something that's compatible with the existing site and so forth. But to have a blur between the private developer and the units, I assume that will go up there, and the public site, it's going to be very difficult to manage. That land is very valuable, that empty land is valuable by itself, and so I think it's up to the staff to kind of come up with some feel, and with the community to come up with one feel, some feel of what can be done with those buildings and how they can be rehabbed and programmed.
I would say that the RFQ is done in such a way that someone could propose separating it out and having no connection between the rehab and public open space of the historic buildings and the new development, or someone might be able to come up with a proposal where there is a desire to be able to retain and work on this and have these elements here act as amenity to their project here. And so maybe it's a joint venture, maybe it's a joint ownership, maybe it's a reciprocal rights agreement type of scenario. None of those things are prevented in the RFQ.
Yeah, that, I mean, I guess it could happen. That's a much more difficult bar, as far as I'm concerned, rather than give us the money, what's it worth, and then we turn around as a city, Parks and Rec, et cetera, and do something with the property.
Ms. Friedman?
Oh, just as a quick response to what Mr. Montero said, I think that we, at this point, we should really kind of be open to all sorts of proposals. Hopefully we'll get something that's really interesting that we haven't even thought of. I mean, to me, sort of the obvious thing is you put housing on one side and nothing on the other, but there could be something that does integrate the site in an interesting way. I mean, I could certainly see something where you have a building that's for the historic societies to have a museum, which would be fabulous, and maybe a few other buildings that are community-based, sort of nonprofit-based, and then maybe there's some other buildings that could be offices, that could be for architects and for, you know, small local businesses to be there. And then you have something where you really have people coming and going all the time who could go to those museums or visit those buildings. So I think that a blend of commercial and nonprofit uses with, hopefully the commercials subsidizing free rent or extremely cheap rent for the nonprofits could be a very, something that's not only interesting but workable from a development point of view. If they're getting market rate rents for little offices, and then that subsidizes some free rents for various local community-based nonprofits, that's something where I could see a public-private blending on that site working extremely well. And I, I feel like I've seen that in other sites, you know, around the country, where you have sort of open public uses next to private commercial uses but that are compatible. In my mind, anything that can be done, if it's housing on the other side, to keep the density as low as possible, that would be what I'd be looking for. And I would love to see some developers explore non-housing uses. Someone had mentioned a boutique hotel. What an interesting concept. I don't even know, I know there's that really cute motel on Foothill, but I don't know what other motel options there are in that area. It could be really interesting to have a small-scale boutique hotel on that site. How cool. Something that we all could use, and when our friends come into town, we have a great place to send them to in North Glendale. So I, you know, we have to, at this point, I think, I think staff's on the right track of not dictating what this has to be, of just saying what our broader goals are, what the historic context is, what the neighborhood's like, and then hope that we have quality developers who are creative and who understand the context and who take the time to understand the area and the community and come back with something that's not just acceptable but something that people will be excited about in the area. That would be the best-case scenario, and that's something that I'm looking forward to seeing, and hopefully, hopefully we can get this RFQ out to not just the usual suspects who build housing, but to developers who specialize in boutique hotels. Can we get it to them? Can we get it to, I don't know what other commercial uses there are that could be interested in this that would be exciting for the community, but let's try to get that out widely and be open-minded about what we get, at least in the initial phase, and hope that we get something that is a little bit out of the box and a little bit, you know, kind of has that wow factor.
Okay. Thank you. We have four speakers, so I'm going to open the public hearing.
And before I sit down, just to address Councilmember Najarian, your comment, what escaped me was is that we asked that the rehabilitation be done in conformance of Secretary of Interior standards for rehabilitation. So that would be addressing the issue of new windows versus no, rehabbing the existing windows and doing it to preserve and maintain the historical significance of it.
So the standard is to rehab rather than replace?
Correct, or as long as they can meet the Secretary of Interior standards for historic rehabilitation.
I left my copy of those at home.
I think I have one here in the drawer.
Thank you. So we're going to open the public hearing, and our first speaker is Joanna Linkhorst. How much time do you need, Joanna?
Oh, just a few minutes. I just, I just want to say I'm Joanna Linkhorst, representing the Friends of Rock Haven, a group that gets to represent the city, and that we are allowed to tidy the place and clean it as well as give tours, and in doing so get to represent the community to the city, because we get to hear from these people how they appreciate the spot. What is amazing about this place is it's not just the last of as many as 25 sanitariums from the Crescent Valley area, it is fully intact. It has the rock walls, the brick wall, it has homes from the 1920s, it has buildings from the 1930s, it has oak trees, it has the patterns left from the gardens. It is a remarkable historical park, and I appreciate so much that the city has been taking such good care of this and held on to this asset. taking such good care of this and held on to this asset, as Mr. Ochoa has said, to make sure that we take the best advantage of it as possible and not just rush into something and lose a bird in the hand. So I appreciate you guys taking this under consideration, and we're very excited to see the sorts of things that, and ideas that might come out of this. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Linkhorst. Next speaker is Greg Grammar. Three minutes, okay? Enough?
Yes, that's mine. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Greg Grammar, and I'm the president of the Glendale Historical Society, a nonprofit organization with nearly 600 individual members dedicated to the preservation of Glendale's architectural heritage. The Glendale Historical Society strongly supports the issuance of a request for qualifications to list interest in restoring and rehabilitating the Rock Haven Sanitarium, along with some limited development that complements the historic character of the site. It is our hope that this approach will lead to the selection of a qualified developer, ideally one with experience in historic properties, who will create a plan that honors and preserves Rock Haven's past in order to ensure that its viability in future, its viability in future as a historic resource. We look forward to working with the city to ensure that any proposed plans embrace adaptive reuse and public access to the property, and retain and revitalize Rock Haven's historic structures, features, and landscaping in accordance with the Secretary of the Interior standards for rehabilitation. And I would like to thank the city manager and city staff for meeting with us, listening to our concerns, and involving us in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Lawler, three minutes?
Hi, my name is Mike Lawler, and I'm here representing the Historical Society of the Crescent Valley. Although this concept strays a little bit from the original concept that the property was purchased under, we're confident that something can be worked with here. We're confident that a compromise can be reached that will both preserve the public, both preserve the historic buildings that are there, and at the same time, bring the site to life and make it a great place for the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Mike Morgan?
Good day, Mr. Mayor, City Councilpersons, Mr. Ochoa, city staff. My name's Mike Morgan, and I'm here to fully support the issuing of the RFQ for Rock Haven. Remembering the fact, remembering the fact that this property was built by women for women, it is unique. It is time this gem that is part of this jewel city is brought to the citizens of Glendale to see, wonder, and enjoy. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. Do you all like to go first, or?
Yes.
First, Quintero?
All right, I'm very happy that we've reached this point. I was one of, certainly a proponent of this purchase, and unfortunately, it was perfect timing. After buying it, literally, the market tanked, the economy tanked, and we've had it there all these years. And I want to thank people that have spent their time and energy to keep it going. I ride by there quite a bit, and it looks great, looks great from a distance, but hopefully, whatever we come up with, it will, it will work for the historic preservation and use of the, of the site. And I want to thank Mr. Ochoa. It was his idea to sort of launch this enterprise, and I'm, everyone in the community has obviously bought into it, so it's just a question of how to do it and what's going to give us the biggest bang for our buck. But for sure, I want to make sure that it stays open in public hands, is programmed, and open to historic groups, et cetera, et cetera. That, to me, is why we purchased it, and that's the way it needs to stay.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver?
Well, a former council member, who will remain unnamed, some years ago, took me up to Rock Haven. At the time, at that time in our past, we were looking at expanding the fire station across from Trader Joe's. In order to do that, we would have to relocate the library. And when I was taken to Rock Haven, I saw the frontage on Honolulu in the southeast corner being possibly location for a two-story library with the second story opening up out onto the grounds where weddings and parties and everything could be held. You just, I could just picture, it was cleaned up, grass around the oak trees, the walls and everything. I was sold. I went and voted on it. Yeah, we're in a different economic time there, as we've discussed this morning. Only things I would, I mean, I want to open up to anything. I mean, creative minds, let's see what people can tell us, because we're always the veto of power on anything that doesn't work, and of course, what the residents up there don't want. We'll make sure it doesn't happen. But a couple of things that I kind of hope for is that the Spanish architecture that's used in the building is continued in any of the new developments, so it doesn't look like it stands alone, it looks like it blends in. I love Spanish architecture, and I haven't won on a single project in Glendale yet with Spanish architecture, but if any place is, it's going to be here. And I would also hope that when it's designed or whatever, that the children or the people living in those units would be able to go into the public space where all the historical buildings are, as well as the rest of the community, and enjoy it. There aren't that many areas up there. We have 12 oaks coming up eventually, but it's steep. This is flat. You can do a lot. I think we'll have, end up with a change in zoning, because we have two different zonings on the same parcels, so whether we'll do an overlay, I don't know. But the times I've been there and then, the buildings, you know, the history of it, I'd like to hear what comes out of the RFQ and also the public, when they all sit down together, start visualizing what you can do in those different buildings. Maybe a library someday is still feasible in that corner, because there are no buildings there. But any case, it's the right thing to do, and like I said, open it up wide. Let everybody come back to us with their ideas, and we'll tailor down and we'll end up picking what I hope will be the best company to go forth with it, no matter what their background is.
Thank you. Ms. Friedman?
Well, I want to thank the various historic societies for working with the city. It is a different vision than was, what was originally presented to the community, and if the economy hadn't changed, I think that that would have happened a couple of years ago, but things have changed, and it's, you know, it's unfortunate, but I think that we can make lemonade out of lemons here and have something that is nice and that's an asset and that people are proud of. But we need your help to do that, because I think your vision of what Rock Haven is and was is going to be instrumental to guiding whatever Rock Haven will be in the future. So it's not just that we need you, because it's nice to have you here saying you support it, but we really need you to make sure we have something that's a wonderful project. I appreciate all of the time that you've put in working on this, and certainly, all of the time that the Friends of Rock Haven have put in maintaining Rock Haven so that it's still there right now. It is certainly important, not just because of the history of sanitariums, but also because of the history of women's health and what women experienced through sanitariums, forced and non-forced, and this was not one of those types of sanitariums, but there were other sanitariums at the time, of course, where women were incarcerated against their will, sometimes just for political reasons, truly, and this is an interesting, this fits in interestingly with that history. So I think it's a very important site in Glendale historically, not because of the architecture, although it's lovely, but because of that history. And I'm glad that we're going to be preserving it, and whether it's housing or something else there, as long as I'm on this council, and I think the other members too, we're going to make sure that it's something that's, that's nice and that works in the context of the community. So I want to thank all of you, and to Jay Platt, and to Hassan Higani, and our whole staff, who's worked so hard on this project, and of course, Peter Zovak, and we will continue to work on this project to make sure that it's wonderful. I think everybody has kind of the same vision, and everybody really wants to make sure that this is a win for everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Senator Najarian?
I will be voting for putting out this RFQ, but I want everyone to know that that doesn't necessarily mean I'm going to be voting to select anyone, just anyone. I'm going to hold the proposers to very high standards, both in terms of their background and their sensitivity to the region and their knowledge of the history of the site. So I hope they bring in some good proposals and good qualifications, otherwise, I'm going to throw it back and redo this when the time comes.
Thank you. And I'll be voting for it also, because I believe this is the best good-faith effort under the circumstances by the city to preserve the site to the best that is possible to do so, and to make sure that there is no further deterioration to the, to the buildings on the site, and really find a long-term solution. It's not, you know, it's not an ideal solution, I think we all recognize it, but we also all recognize that the circumstances are what they are. And indeed, I suspect that the bulk of the work is ahead of us, both for staff, for all the vested parties, and the council, to make sure that the resulting project and the resulting entity that takes on the project is the right one, and the one that works for all of us jointly. With that having said-
I'll move 1A and make an, is there a second?
Second.
Make an additional comment. I also think that whatever project goes in needs to respect the sanctity of the residential neighborhoods to the north of this property, starting with Hermosa. Everything from Hermosa to the other side hopefully will benefit by what's going in here.
Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Sananian?
Yes. Next item?
Next item is a public hearing director of Public Works. This is continued from March 18, 2014, regarding conditional vacation of a portion of Los Feliz Road, southwest of the intersection of Los Feliz Road and Gardena Avenue, vacation case number 151V. 2A is a resolution ordering the vacation, B is a resolution adopting Plan Number 12-214.
Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, interestingly enough, this item is a distinct action, yet it's the same property as an item that is before you this evening by way of inordinance. This is a resolution, or two resolutions, that are focused around the conditional vacation, should you vote later today, tonight, to sell this property, then this vacation would be activated. If you have specific questions about the actual vacation itself, our city engineer, Mr. Galanian, is in the audience, as are the representatives of Tropico Apartments from Mill Creek, rather, and Mr. Genthe is here, if you would like to discuss this at this point. It's a public hearing.
Do we have questions? Yes. Mr. Najarian?
Can you explain to me the two-step process that's required? I mean, either we vacate or sell. I mean, if we sell, do we still have to vacate?
No, this would be a conditional vacation, so if you choose not to sell tonight, then the condition is not met, and vacation, the, the, the vacation remains, the vacation is not executed. This is a conditional vacation.
Now, why is this, why is this parcel, is this parcel critical to the development of that project?
Yes, it is.
So if that parcel is not sold, this project would not go forward?
That's correct.
I see.
In its current configuration, I should say. If it were not included, then the configuration of the proposed Tropico project would have to change, possibly, certainly reconfiguring the site plan, possibly looking for variances to come before council.
Well, then, my only comment would be to encourage my colleague, who was so adamant to vote for a rescission of the previous action last week, so she could vote against this project, vote against this sale, this vacation.
Yes, Ms. Friedman?
Let me ask a couple of questions. First of all, before I get to this parcel, what about the parcel across the street that they were going to landscape?
That is conditioned out as part of the overall project that was considered, such that the developer has to complete a beautification plan, if you will, that is approved by the CDD department, that mirrors to some degree-
But they're not going to own that.
I do not believe they will own that. That'll only be improved.
Right. Now, just to refresh my memory, I seem to remember that, not just with this project, but with the previous project, the Dr. Cho project, also included this piece of land, and from what I remember, they were landscaping that land, that-
That I don't know, ma'am.
They, I don't recall exactly, but I know that Dr. Cho's project did not actually change or alter in any way that this piece of land to increase the path. In this case, they have widened the path so that they would not have to, that they would actually meet code standards, and then, and they're also proposing to put an exit. So they're actually really using this as part of the project in a way that Dr. Cho was not.
So it's, they need this piece of property to have an exit so that, basically, so that people can get in and out of the building?
Right, and they can walk to the stores and the-
So they can walk, so that they can walk?
Correct.
Okay. Now, they could still do a project without this piece of land.
They could do the project without this piece of land, and they would just need to come and adjust the project.
Right, but with this piece of land, it gives people who live there more opportunity to walk, to Costco, and to those places, and it also allows them to landscape what's a very blighted piece of property. I mean, it's something that you see, immediately when you drive into Glendale, maybe the first thing you see when you drive into Glendale, is this big concrete slab on both sides of the road.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So this embankment would be torn out, replaced with the retaining walls that are landscaped stepping up the street. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask one question?
Yes.
Mr. Higani?
What does the fire department say about this?
My understanding is the fire requires the land to be able to get around that end of the building. They need additional land at that spot. Nobody knows?
I'm looking at Mr. Barry, because he knows exactly what's fire.
At least I thought that, is what I was told.
The staircase was actually requested by fire also. They would take access from Los Feliz, go up the stairs to the project site.
Okay.
Okay, if we have no further-
Well, I'll make a comment before I vote.
It's a public hearing.
Oh, so, there are no cards, so I don't want to, open and closed?
Okay.
Please, go ahead.
Thanks. I did vote against this project, but I'm going to vote for this, because this project could continue without this. They, I mean, does this kill the project? I mean, it kills this incarnation. Does it mean they come back with a slightly different configuration? Yeah, they come back with a slightly different configuration, but the city then loses the benefit of having nice landscaping on Los Feliz Boulevard on both sides. To me, that's a tangible benefit, that if we're going to have this project, I certainly don't want to see go away. I also like that it's something that the fire department requires them to do, they're doing, I think they need to, and I also think it's great that the residents will then be incentivized, will be given a safe access to the street and to the stores next door. So is this the death knell for Tropico Apartments? No. It's maybe that they have to, it's an annoyance to the developer if we vote against this. They come back with a less good project, the city doesn't get landscaping on Los Feliz out of it. I don't see the point in voting against that at this point. So I'm going to vote for this, and hopefully, we'll have very nice landscaping, and we'll get that out of this project, and that will be a benefit to the city.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero?
I don't believe the previous project included landscaping across Los Feliz, and that's going to make a big difference, as you, I drove through this location twice yesterday. When you come west on Los Feliz, the LA portion is quite nice, and you hit that underpass, and all of a sudden, concrete on both sides, so I'm happy there's going to be a full landscaping.
Yes. Mr. Najarian?
I just have a comment on the issue of blight in the city. If we have areas that are blighted, that are not maintained, that don't have the proper green space, our code enforcement officers should be out there, speaking with the owners and asking them to remedy the situation. The remedy to cure the blight should not have to be the approval of a 220-unit project. That should be a completely separate issue. If we've got blight, if we've got graffiti that's painted, if we've got a chain-link fence that isn't maintained, if we've got garbage, if we've got weeds growing, am I not correct, Mr. City Manager, that our action should be to enforce our codes in terms of the maintenance and upkeep of a property, and not feel obligated or pressured as a council to solve a 10,000-square-foot embankment issue by permitting a 220-unit project? If we like the project, let's say we like the project, but let's not say we're voting for the project because it's going to landscape an area that's blighted because the current owners aren't maintaining it.
Well, excuse me, that's not what, that's not what we- That's not what we said. We, being me, said, we're going to have this project anyway. I'd rather have the better incarnation of it with the landscaping. And by the way, that blight is city-owned. It's not that there's graffiti and trash on it, it's that it's a concrete embankment, which is ugly. So, you know, whether you call it blight or you say, that's a really unfortunate piece of engineering that I wish we had the money to do a lot of landscaping on and maintain, here we have a developer that's going to do that. We're forcing them to do it on the other side of Los Feliz as well, and they're willing to do it. The city's getting a benefit out of it. Could we take money out of our capital improvement or general fund and do it? Yeah, but as we saw from the budget today, it just means we'd have to take it away from somewhere else. This is a way that we're getting it free of charge to the people. And like I said, I think you vote against this, this project comes back in a slightly different form and still gets approved, and we still have that, not blighted, but ugly embankment. Anyway, I don't think it's worth arguing over what the definition of blight is.
No, no, and my only point is, let's be honest with each other, let's be honest with the public. If we like this project, then let's, with our heads held up high, say, I like this project, and I'm going to vote for it, and I'm going to permit it to go forward. And that's my only point. Let's not play games with rescinding it and coming back and saying, oh, I want it because there's stairs, or I want it because it's ugly. Let's be honest with everyone, and I can accept that, and I think the public can accept that. And that's where we should be as a council, speaking our mind and being honest in everything that we say. And I'm not against this project because I know that I'm only one vote or two votes, and I know that the third vote isn't going to be picked up. I'm against it because I don't like it, and I won't reiterate my lengthy discussion of this, but let's be honest. If we like it, let's say we like it, and not split hairs over the, the city-owned property is blight, or it's ugly, or it's going to get redeveloped or not.
I think we've covered this point sufficiently.
As much as I would love to respond, I just think it's not getting us anywhere, and I think it's getting personal, which it shouldn't. This is about a building. It really shouldn't be a personal attack, so I'm just going to drop it.
Why don't we move on? Yes.
With all honesty, I'd like to move 2A and B.
Mr. Quintero had a comment he wanted to move.
I was just going to say that that embankment is typical of what Mr. Weaver did at the Corps of Engineers here.
Flood control, only with flood control banks, yep.
You have to move past that.
So-
Got a good joke out there.
Mr. Weaver, you, what was the action?
I mostly moved 2A and B.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman-
Yes.
Najarian-
A.
Quintero-
Yes.
Weaver-
Aye.
Mayor Sinayan-
Yes, and on B?
They were both.
Oh, it's both, okay, that's fine.
Move re-adjourned.
Second.
Re-adjourned at 4:03 PM.
Wait, do we have a closed session?